Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our May Council meeting. Before we move into our proclamation and our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Jerry to do prayer and Steve if you'll lead us in the pledge and if you'll all stand with us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we're so thankful for this day, Lord. We're thankful for the blessings you've given us, Father. Lord, I just pray that you'll be with us tonight as we go doing the business of the city. Father, just give us wisdom to make the proper decisions, Lord, and insight, Father. Lord, we know that there's been those in our community that have lost loved ones. Father, I pray especially tonight for the family of Dan Whittle, Lord, and thank you for what he has done for our town, our middle Tennessee, and all, Father. We just pray that you'll be with his family, Lord, and just comfort them during this time. Again, Lord, go with us as we go about this business and I just pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve and Jerry? Ms. Diane, we have a proclamation tonight for Fair Housing Month. Would you read that for us, please?
Whereas April 2019 marks the 51st anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas this Act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental, or financing of property, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and strengthened its enforcement procedures, and whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, to eliminate legal barriers to equal housing, and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental human right for all, and whereas individuals in the city have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, disability, gender identity, familial status, or national origin, and whereas the town of Smyrna fully supports the intent and purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and follows policies and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now therefore, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Smyrna, I do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month in the town of Smyrna to establish as an inclusive community committed to fair housing, proclaim this 25th day of April 2019.
Great. We have a group here. If you all will come forward. Mark, you'll come down?
Join my family.
I was going to say, join your group, your peeps. Get everybody on TV. Present you all with this proclamation and Chief Bill there will get our photo. And I'm going to let you each introduce yourself and if you want to tell who you work with or any of that, you're more than welcome.
Okay. I'm Andrea Hilton and I'm with Exit Realty, Bob Lamb and Associates, former principal at Thurman Francis Arts Academy.
Natalie Wilson with Parks. I'll just let y'all pass it.
Phil Wilson, I'm also Natalie's husband and with Parks and I'm on the BZA here in town.
Joe Chippone with Parks.
Terry Anderson with Parks.
I'm Skip Anderson with Parks.
I think they do.
Let me have it back so John don't get me if I don't. Well, we just want to thank you all for being here tonight and what each one of you do for our community. We can't tell you how much we appreciate it. I know you've had a rough couple of BZAs and we appreciate that, so, but thank you for being here. You're welcome. Uh huh. Okay, we will move into our items for discussion. Our first is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, part of parcel 62.01. Kevin, I'm not used to you being on the end of there.
Yeah. This is the plan of services as for the annexation. It's the next item on your agenda. This is a relatively standard document that does provide in writing that the town would be providing all services to the parcel of land that's being requested to be annexed except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. Planning Commission did review this and did recommend it to you.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion on this, so item two goes along with it. It's the consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, part of parcel 62.01, containing approximately 1.79 acres. It's requested by Land Solutions Company on behalf of John Hill. The property is located west of Rocky Fork Ammival Road and north of Riley Road. This is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is the annexation part of this request. The next item is the zoning, a PRD amendment for the property that's already within the town as well as changing the zoning to R1 for a piece of it. This would be an amendment or would be added to the Blakeney development. This would again be, the town would be providing all services here except for water and the area that's on the map that is shown in blue is the area that would actually be annexed. It's only about 1.79 acres. I'll go through and hit the highlights on the Blakeney development with this as well. This would be a PRD, would be a residential development, overall development would be 197 single-family lots and 76 townhouses. Access would be from two separate entrances on the Rocky Fork Ammival Road. The existing PRD is for 262 single-family lots, so it would be an increase of about 11 units total. Side setbacks for the single-family lots would be changed from seven to six. We did include the plan that was attached with it as well. The Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval with several conditions which are detailed on the summary there.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-22 relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, part of parcel 6201. And that's our item we always have to deal with.
Our housekeeping item.
Yes, annexation. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD for property located on Tax Map 54, parcels 47.00 and 62.00, containing approximately 107.15 acres. It's requested by Land Solutions Company. The property is located on Rocky Fork Ammival Road. In addition, request includes rezoning of 2.44 acres of parcel 62.00 to go from PRD to R1, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I don't have anything different to add to what we just talked about. Again, just to highlight, this is, the area that's in red on the map is the part of the land that would be zoned back to R1 and then the area in green is the existing property that is within the town where the PRD amendment would be taking place.
We had quite a bit of discussion about swapping this and all at the last meeting. Is there anything else? Anyone wants to ask a question or add?
Yeah, this last meeting, so I didn't get all the discussion, but talking about the water not available till 2021.
That's correct. There is water there for domestic. There's not water there for fire flow and so there is an upgrade that is in process and it's on CUD's capital improvement plan. That would not be, they're projected to have that done in spring of 2021, so there could not be any homes built here until that time.
Say that again, sir.
There could not be any homes built until that fire flow could be met.
It's not built till then.
Right.
It's approved but not built.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, we said that we would not issue any building permits.
Correct. No building permits would be issued.
And they're aware of that.
Yes.
Okay. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the text of the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article IV, Section 4.075, building spacing. Second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is just a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is something that the Planning Commission had asked us to take a look at and so we brought it to them at their last meeting and to you on first reading. Nothing has changed since first reading. This just kind of puts in writing into the ordinance things that we have added as conditions for several PRDs. The last several times we've had PRDs come through when there are side setbacks that are less than 10 feet. And so this just puts all that into the ordinance, so it's for anyone who's going to do a development, it's going to be in the ordinance and clear to them from the beginning instead of having to be added as a condition every time, so.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Neil Schaefer Incorporated relative to the construction, engineering, inspection services for the intelligent transportation Phase One and Two project. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Council, yes. This is an agreement with Neil Schaefer to provide construction and engineering inspection services for ITS Phases One and Two. Since it's a TDOT-funded local programs project, they require a full-time CEI on the project.
Questions for Tom on this?
What's involved with the right-of-way acquisitions and who actually does live?
Just generally speaking, we're right-of-way.
By the way.
Well, I guess if it's, if it's a property that's in the town of Smyrna and...
Well, do these not generally run alongside the road or overhead or how?
Yeah, for this specific project, then there was no right-of-way acquisition involved in it since there was, everything was in the right-of-way to begin with. It's all, almost all of it's overhead and all aerial, so there were no easements or right-of-way to acquire with this project.
Okay. It just, it made reference to that they were being placed by the time of the issuance of the contractors' notice to proceed. Well, CEI works, that's part of the scope even though this particular project that will be in that project, I think is what is confusing, so. Gotcha.
Okay. Item seven is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Gresham Smith relative to the design services for the Sam Ridley Parkway at Old Nashville Highway Intersection Improvement Project.
So this is the CMAC project we got grant money for to provide improvements to the intersection of Sam Ridley and Old Nashville Highway. We went out to RFQ and selected Gresham Smith and this is the contract to have them provide the NEPA, the environmental document, as well as the construction plans and prepare bid documents for this project.
Questions for Tom on this?
So, is it going to take into consideration what's happening right now on Sam Ridley?
As far as it's starting, you know, as soon as we approve the, this next month, the next meeting, then they'll be able to get started getting some survey work done and preparing the environmental document to submit to TDOT, which that takes, that can take six to nine months to get approval on that, then we'll move through the other phases of the project. And as far as how it ties into the existing widening project, Gresham Smith is doing the three-lane widening, so they've got all the construction plans on it and basically what it'll do is just marry into that project and with Potomac and what we're doing with Stonecrest, all those will be coordinated together.
Okay.
And you said, I think, that this was going to go down and take into account Rock Springs Road?
No, it will not go down to Rock Springs.
How far north will it go?
That's still kind of to be determined at this time. This is the design on it, so we can come in, do some traffic analysis to see exactly how far they need to go, how many lanes need to be provided. Usually they look at like a 20-year horizon line, so they project out, you know, they're looking where the traffic is now, what the growth patterns are like, project out 20 years on what the traffic is going to be like at that point and make sure that the design's compliant with what the needs are 20 years from now.
What, 20 years from, I mean, the study shows that it needs to be looked at Rock Springs Road in a 20-year scope.
Well, we did do the Rock Springs corridor study and it included the intersection of Rock Springs and Old Nashville Highway, so it, when we do look at making improvements to that intersection, we'll take into account the work done at Rock Springs, I'm sorry, at Sam Ridley and Old Nashville Highway and they'll model it all together in one, as one traffic study to see what effect improvements to Rock Springs Road and Old Nashville Highway would have on Sam Ridley because there is, it is a short distance between Sam Ridley and Rock Springs, so, and with the volume of traffic you have, you do need to have a lot more lanes for those cars to stack more side to side rather than to back all the way up into Sam Ridley, so that would be taken into account.
It just looks like even going east on Rock Springs Road that more stacking lanes may be needed back there. That's on the Rock Springs corridor study, that would be on this.
Have we gotten the final on that?
I don't think we've received the final yet, have we? Tom?
I think they did submit a final on that.
Did they?
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
We've not gotten a copy of that yet.
I'm sorry, yes, I'll get you that.
Okay, other questions? We'll move on to item eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with CMS uniforms relative to the fire department uniforms. Chief?
Mayor Council, we bring four contracts to you this evening. First one is CMS uniforms. They've agreed to hold the prices again and we'd like to ask the council to give mayor permission to sign the contract.
Questions for Chief on this?
The next one...
For y'all to go without uniforms.
Yes, ma'am.
Item nine is also chief's, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with Pai Barker relative to the fire department fire extinguisher service.
And again, Pai Barker has agreed to hold the prices for another year and we ask y'all's permission for the mayor to sign the contract.
Any questions on this?
Yeah, and Chief, they do, they do the backwater testing as well, the water flow testing. Do they do that?
The sprinkler system?
Yes.
Yes, sir, they do.
Do they do, and you may do this internally, SCBA inspections, do they do that as well or you do that internally?
A third party does that for us.
Okay, so that's not part of this?
No, sir.
Okay.
Other questions for Chief? Okay. Item 10 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Cummins Crosspoint relative to generator maintenance at Fire Station Four. Chief?
Mayor Council, again, well, actually, this is a new contract for sections for emergency backup generator and we again ask the council to give mayor permission to sign it.
Questions for Chief on this?
So, because this is a new contract, that's why it was separate from the other generators that are in the next, next numbered item that you're going to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
You had to do, so you do them separately? Each of the stations has an individual contract or just Station Four has an individual contract?
Well, Station Four had one. This is the first time and they would not add it to the others. And all of them are, as far as, we don't have to go out to bid for the price, but they require a contract be signed.
Okay.
And of course, I can't sign it, so that's, that's why I'm bothering y'all.
So we'll move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Cummins Crosspoint relative to generator maintenance for fire stations one, two, three, five, six, and the Moore's Hill Radio Tower site.
And again, this is the rest of our emergency backup generators. They've agreed to hold the maintenance prices for another year and we ask permission for the mayor to sign the contract.
Questions for Chief on this? Then we'll move on to item 12, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the town of, between the town of Police Department and the Domestic Violence Program. That's a, I was going to say, yes, the town of Smyrna Police Department and the Domestic Violence Program. Ms. Diane, that's the first mistake I've seen you make in years.
Are you sure?
It may have been me.
No, it was probably Brian. Brian did it. Let's blame it on Brian.
Diane makes more noise.
That's right.
Exactly. I'll take the one.
Oh, you're going to take it? Okay, good. Thanks, Chief.
We're going to have to wait now.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am. This is an MOU between us and the Domestic Violence Program and on giving both sides guidance on how to give or provide services to sexual assault victims.
Questions for Chief on this?
This just says you're going to call them when this happens? I mean, there's no money exchanged or anything like that, right?
No, none.
Item 13 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order with Experitec relative to the gas scada, scada is that right? Skada, skada, upgrade project at the Rock Springs Gate Station.
Yes, ma'am. We are involved in the skada upgrade right now. We're almost complete. We found some additional issues at the Rock Springs Gate Station that we need to take care of, so this is a change order for the original project.
Questions for Mike on this?
Does the change have to do with the sensors? I kept reading about sensors or some sort of...
It does. There's some thermal wells that have to be put in and some sensors to measure temperature of the gas, so there's some additional changes that we need to make there before we can monitor that better.
Anything else? Item 14 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with, and I can't get to my email right now, so you sent that to us. Who was it?
United Systems.
United Systems, relative to the gas AMI metering upgrade project.
Right, and I apologize for getting this to you late. We've hashed through the evals and everything. United Systems did rank first in the evals, however, they are not the low bidder. The low bidder did not meet the scope of work, so we are recommending United Systems to go for this project.
Questions for Mike on this?
Were they both installed in the same equipment or...
Well, it's the same type of equipment, but different, different manufacturers and different...
At your comfort with this manufacturer?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 15 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Bush Construction relative to the gas continuing construction.
Yeah, on this, this would be the fourth year for renewal, but in talking with Brian and Rex, Bush has agreed to hold their prices firm for another year and given the high prices of construction, we felt like that was a prudent move for the town, so it's what we recommend.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? Item 16 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Senegro relative to the water treatment plant lagoon sludge removal.
Yes, ma'am. This, we switch between each, each of the lagoons every year. This will be the North Lagoon. We do recommend the low bidder, which was Senegro.
Questions for Mike on that?
What do they do with the sludge, Mike?
They haul it to the farm.
To our farm?
They haul it to farms. Mm-hmm.
Item 17 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with the following relative to chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plants. The water treatment plant is Chemtrade with polyaluminum hydro, hydroxychloride, Goldbrin, how do you say that one? That's a new one.
Gulbrinson.
Gulbrinson with aluminum chlorohydrate, Dico with sodium hypochlorite, SNF polydine with catatonic polymer, Univar with sodium chloride, Nexar, Nexair?
Nexair.
Nexair with carbon dioxide, ADC with hydroxylphosphate, Calgon carbon, carbon with powder activated carbon, ADC with sodium hydroxide. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have SNF polydine with emulsion polymer. Any questions?
Yes, catonic, considered catatonic.
I'll tell you what, big boy. You just read the next one.
Big boy. Calgon is just bad.
Item 18, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute renewal contracts with the following relative to chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plants. The water treatment plant, Penco for hydrofluoric acid.
Silic.
Silic.
ADC with calcium thiocalcate, sodium permanganate, sodium orthopoliphosphate, Aquamag, and potassium permanganate. Carmuse with calcium oxide, which is lime, and Hawkins with citric acid. At the wastewater treatment plant, we have Nikim?
Yes.
With liquid aluminum sulfate.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
Spelling me at the end.
I can barely say them. I know I can't spell them. Thank you. That still doesn't make up for your comment. Item 19, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Science Center relative to the rental of the Treehouse exhibit at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is just another exhibit for our Outdoor Adventure Center. It's the Treehouse exhibit. It is smaller and a little less expensive than some of the others, which works out good for us in the summer times. We'll have summer camps and we need the space, but it'd also give them something to do and educational background with the Treehouse exhibit, so we're just asking for approval of that exhibit. It costs $13,125 with a $2,600 deposit.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we will move on to item 20, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, and this is a first reading. Rex?
Mayor Council, and since the NFL Draft is in Nashville, I've been told that I'm on the clock, so we'll try to work through this tonight as quick as we can. The ordinance and the detailed budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 are submitted for your consideration. The budget is, the budget is in the Smyrna Cloud Dropbox. I have attached a budget changes from retreat to first read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the retreat. We're asking that you approve the ordinance adopting the budget.
Questions for Rex on this?
There's one comment that I have. The additional capital amount that you have listed for the town, for the library system is different than what we communicated to Rita, so we just need to update that. When we met with Rita, we communicated 7,500.
I've talked to Rex about that. We'll make that change.
Well, just so the rest of the council knows that that number's listed as 6,400.
427. And we'll have it for the second reading.
Round up to 7,500.
So first reading, we're going to leave it as is and you'll want to do it second reading?
Yes, because I gave it to you the other number.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a technicality.
Yeah. And I'm sure there'll be, might be other changes to, between first and second.
I'm sure there will be. Thank you for catching that.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we will move on to...
Well, I'll, I'll do the presentation now if you...
Oh, you want to do, okay. I didn't know if you wanted to do it now or wait till after the second, the next one.
With the first pick.
I thought this year I would start off with about, talking about the property tax rates. Rutherford County's tax rate is $2.00 and almost 10 cents. Murphis Borough is, is almost 95 cents. Laverne is almost 76 cents and Smyrna's is 70 cents. Eagle is almost 56 cents, so it just ought to be a good comparison between the different entities and the...
And we're hearing some of those are going up, not ours, but others.
Ours, ours are not going up.
That's right.
For the general fund, we have projected a $21,217 surplus, which is kind of a break-even situation for us. And the Water and Sewer Fund, we're asking for a 2% increase in the water rates and a 3% increase in the sewer rates. This produces an average increase for residential customer of $1.07 a month. The breakdown on that would be water at 35 cents and sewer at 72 cents. And I personally want to thank all the department heads for the work that they've put in to get us all their numbers and the statistics and invaluable help that Brian's given me and the finance department for their work and their responsiveness in getting this, this budget to you. There's a list of our new personnel. I won't go down through every one of these, but there's... There's a list of our new personnel. I won't go down through every one of these, but there's fourteen in the general fund, of which there's several public safety positions in there. Get down to it, the, it's a total of sixteen full-time positions, three part-time and six seasonal. It'll cost, it'll be about, well, it'll be three hundred ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars to the budget.
And we asked at the retreat, how many total employees did this bring us to?
We've got about five hundred and twenty positions right now, so just under five fifty total positions.
For the general fund summary, and all these numbers you'll see tonight are summarized because we can't get the numbers on the screen. But we will post the detailed numbers and the whole budget on the website after approval. Here, we'll talk about the format. And the, we start off at the top with the description. The sixteen seventeen actuals audited numbers, seventeen eighteen are audited numbers. Eighteen nineteen amended is the current budget. The eighteen nineteen estimated is what finance estimates, and these are through nine months of the year. Then the last column is what we'll focus on tonight, is the budget that's going to be recommended to the council. We have operating revenues of a little over forty-five million. We have operating expenses at, at almost thirty-eight million. After that, we have transfers to capital projects that will fund our projects during the next year. The next line is a transfer to debt service, and that's the, our principal interest payments that we'll be making currently in this year, which gives us total expenditures of forty-five million, three hundred and forty-three dollars for the year. It'll give us a surplus of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventeen. And gives us an ending, projected ending balance of thirty-five million, sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. If you look just right below that, that seventy-seven point two-nine percent is the comparison of the ending fund balance over our operating revenue. Our financial policy requires a range of thirty to thirty-five percent, so we're doing well with our fund balance. Top ten general fund revenue sources. Typically, I just do the top four. Thought it would be interesting. We always talk about local sales tax is our biggest revenue producer. Then property taxes, then state sales tax, in lieu of taxes, all the way down through hotel motel tax. General fund revenues. All of these percentages are consistent with the prior year. This just gives you a picture of the percentages. I'm a picture guy myself. I like visual images. This will be a chart of the general fund operating expenditures by department. Obviously, police at thirty percent and fire at twenty-five percent constitute a major part of the budget. General fund expenditures by type. Service organizations are, personnel costs are our biggest expense. And these numbers are in line with the prior year also. Health, welfare, and culture. I call these our nonprofits. And there's the list of the nonprofits. There are three sections: intergovernmental, nonprofit community development, and nonprofit other. And as Steve pointed out, we will be changing the Line by Library Capital Project from that sixty-four twenty-seven to seventy-five hundred dollars for the second read. The Raybees Control requested another ten thousand dollars, and that was going to be for an increase of services in the Smyrna area. General fund analysis, another picture. This is my favorite one. This is exciting. As you can see, twenty-eleven through twenty-twelve, we're still in the throes of the recession. And let me back up, say that the green line is the revenues, the red is expenditures, and the blue is the fund balance. So right now, let's just look at the fund balance, the blue line. So like I said, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, we're still, recession's hitting us. And twenty-fourteen, we had increased our fund balance enough to where Standard Poor's upgraded us to a credit rating of AA plus. In twenty-seventeen, Moody's upgraded us to an AA one. And you can see from that, that tells you that these credit rating agencies like for you to have a healthy fund balance.
Rex, at the retreat, you were telling us that there is still a higher level, but we can't go to that because of some restriction on, with the...
Well, it's population and median income, those sort of things, because they...
So we're max within our specifications then?
I've been told that it would be nearly impossible for us to get to the triple-A status, but...
But you said nearly, right?
Pardon?
Nearly impossible?
Nearly impossible. And I know you want me to keep striving for that, and I will. I promise. But just to give you an example of the cities that are triple-A, Brentwood, Germantown, and Franklin, I mean, that kind of tells you.
Usually, we're right in the context with those towns, yes?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're not going to go over every capital project that's listed, but let's hit the big ones. In the fire department, that's a, they're going to approve for a brush truck. And it is not the type of brush truck that comes around and picks up your debris out of your yard. That's a different type of brush truck. A pumper truck, and they have an addition to fire station number one that they've requested. Parks and Recreation, you got the Cedarstone Community Park, Washington and Lowry Park, which is, most people will probably identify that more with the Old Tire World property. Trail improvements, phase three, Miracle Playground area improvements, Rotary Soccer Park annex improvements. And the police department, they're getting twelve SUVs funded through a couple of different sources.
Chief Harlow, do you know if my friend Andy Miller's getting one of those new vehicles? I know he had some car trouble last week. I encountered him on Lowry Street.
Did you stop?
Actually, he was standing in the middle of the road. If you remember the car that was cut out with the radar gun, he was standing in the middle of the road with the radar gun. And I came around a semi, and my radar detector went nuts. So I pulled up beside him, and I rolled the window down and said to him, "You got me. Now what?" He said, "Car dead." So I was just curious. His gray, his gray Crown Vic's had better days, I think.
Good answer, Dave. Good answer.
All right, in the street department, and we're spending a lot of money in this budget for street improvements. Really trying to make an improvement on the traffic congestion in town. We got the widening at Stonecrest and Sam Ridley. You got the intelligent transportation system, phases one and two, and three, four, and five. Weekly and Swan improvements. Sam Ridley improvements is a really big number. Combine those two together, and that's six billion dollars. Nolan Drive relocation and Sam Ridley and Old Nashville Highway.
I think when you look at this budget, infrastructure in general is a huge component of the budget. So with growth, you've got to keep working on infrastructure.
Speaking of infrastructure, this is a chart. And you see the peach colored area, that's eighty-four percent is for infrastructure-related projects, three percent buildings, eight percent equipment, and five percent other improvements. We're now starting the special revenue funds part of the budget. These are funds established to ensure tax dollars are spent on their intended purpose. The state street aid fund is restricted to street expenditures. It has one major source of revenue, and that's from gas taxes, which is a component of state shared taxes. Street lighting and paving makes up over ninety-one percent of the operating expenses. We did increase the paving to a million dollars this year. We do have a deficit of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, but that's due to financing four hundred and seventy thousand dollars of street capital projects, which are non-recurring expenses. So it still leaves us a good, healthy fund balance in the end. Drug fund, restricted for drug enforcement expenses. Their revenue comes from court fines and fees, plus the sale of confiscated property, such as Louis Vuitton belts. You can see where we have a little bit of a deficit in there, but that's due to eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars of capital projects for vehicles. And it still has a good, healthy fund balance at the end of the year. Impact fee fund, fees on new development. These fees are allocated to public safety, parks, and roads. Impact fee expenditures, expenses, our transfers to the capital project fund. And this year, we're going to spend some debt service, transfer some debt service funds to pay for our new street projects. The portion at the bottom is just a breakdown of the ending fund balance by the different types of categories: public safety, parks, and roads. All those total up to be a little bit over three million dollars. Stormwater fund, established by congressional mandate. It has one major source of revenue, and that's, if you look at your utility bill, most residential properties are billed at three dollars and forty-seven cents a month. You can see down here, we're on the surplus deficit line. We have a one point five million dollar deficit. But that's also due to capital projects transfer of over two million dollars. There's expenditures by type. You see capital sixty-one percent, which is a pretty big number for us. Here's the larger capital projects in stormwater. The annual drainage repairs is at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the master stormwater improvement projects at a million five. And I think that's for, most of that's for the downtown area improvements. Stormwater capital projects by function, infrastructure is ninety-six percent, and equipment is four percent. Insurance fund. This is an internal service fund. All of its customers are town departments. The purpose of this fund is to provide dental, vision, medical, property casualty, and worker's compensation for eligible personnel. The insurance fund revenues come from departments with employees. The expenses are payments for claims, premiums, and third-party administration fees. Debt service, revenues are transfers from other funds, mostly the general fund. We have an eighty thousand dollar deficit. That's a bit of an accounting issue because we have a note receivable with the airport authority. Every time we pay principal of eighty thousand dollars, it shows up as a deficit. And the ending fund balance will reduce down to zero when the note is paid off. Debt and financing strategy for our capital projects fund. We've got a column for the description of the capital project, the amount, and the source of financing. You can see there that the financing, all these will be going, will be going to the bond market for probably a twenty-year term. We're getting ready to go to the bond market. And a little bit later tonight, I'll be asking for some resolutions to issue some debt. And this is our estimate for street projects for nineteen and twenty-twenty that will be financed by debt proceeds.
You know, Rex, looking at, you've got basically eleven million dollars up there. But total of those projects would be how many? I mean, with the other sources of revenue from the federal government and the state?
Well, for nineteen, I think we'd budget it nine million just for debt proceeds. But you're talking about Sam Ridley Parkway. Tom, was that fifteen million?
It was about nine million with CI, about nine and a half million dollars.
And the, and we're getting, on, a lot of those, we're getting some grant money to help along with it. But the, every time we do a city street, that's what's really expensive for us.
Terrific. We're using other sources rather than just our own money.
If you remember back through the presentation we made on the total road projects, we were somewhere close to thirty million dollars in total projects, including Sam Ridley, with about eighteen, eighteen million, eighteen million and a half dollars in grant funds coming from T-Dot to help us. So that's kind of where we're at.
I think that's a tribute to the good work that the staff, even our leadership in council.
And that doesn't count the newly announced Jefferson Pike work, which will be added right on the heels of that. We'll have more...
And that's over, you know, the project itself. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later tonight. But I think that total project on the T-Dot side is about thirty-five, thirty-six million dollars. And then we've got the utility side that will be probably another four million, eight million, eight million on the end. So, yeah, there's a lot happening in Smyrna right now.
A lot happening in Smyrna.
Yeah, you just add all those numbers, you're approaching eighty to ninety million dollars in road projects.
Yep.
Making me hard to sleep at night. All right. This is our general obligation outstanding debt forecast. As you can see, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we're working our debt down. Nineteen, you know, we're getting ready to borrow twenty million dollars in general obligation bonds. And once we borrow that, we'll be paying down. So you see the yellow bar is reduced a little bit for principal payments. It may be hard to see this at home, but at the retreat, we spoke to this about, this is a page from the twenty-eighteen audit report. And this is our total... And this is our total yearly debt service on existing debt. As you can see, we get to 2022. In 2023, it, it takes a drop almost in half, down to 1.1 million dollars. Stays that way for '24 and then '25, we, we drop down to just about no debt. So, uh, for a couple of years, it's going to be a little bit tighter for us in our budget. But that's to be expected. Capital projects fund. Revenues are mostly transfers from other funds, debt proceeds, and grants. We've got for 2020, we have a deficit of $2,350,000. We'll be taking that out of the fund balance there, which you can see works us down to a little bit more than $140,000, which is pretty close, but I think we'll be okay. Capital project summary by departments. If you look at the far left there, we start with the departments. And then the next column is the amounts that they requested. The requested amount was a little bit over 39 million. The next column is the approved amount, what we're recommending to the council. It's pretty close to 27 million. So you see that there's several million that, that were not approved. And these were worthy projects, we just didn't have the money to do it this year. Capital projects funding source. You can see there, uh, the top left-hand corner, you've got grant, 21%. And impact fees at 4%. So that's 25% of our revenue is coming from non-taxpayer money. And you can see the, the red shaded area of the chart is, is debt proceeds. This is a new slide that showed the council this year. This is capital assets used in the operation of their governmental funds. It's over the last 10 years. And, um, I guess the takeaway for me when I put this together was the highways and the streets was a little bit over $33 million that we spent over 10 years. And in this year's budget, we have over 17 million. So we're spending, uh, we have budgeted to spend over 15, 51% in one year of what we've done over the last 10. So that kind of tells you the, the emphasis of our budget this year. The enterprise funds are next. First is the water and wastewater fund. Second will be the natural gas fund. Enterprise funds are designed for user fees to pay all of its expenses. They're accounted for like most private companies using accrual accounting. Therefore, when you look at the, uh, the format, it'll be a different format than what we had for the general fund and special revenue funds. The biggest difference is capital assets and long-term debt are on the balance sheet. Capital assets are depreciated and is a line item expense. So we'll start with the water and wastewater fund. And, um, we have an operating income of $4.4 million. Non-operating, um, revenues and expenses is a little bit over $2 million. And that's interest expense from existing bonds. And at the bottom, if you look at the, uh, where it says the key indicators, the change in net position is, is almost $11.4 million, which is, it's a good indicator for us. And a net increase in cash is a positive, is a little bit over $5 million. And we don't need every bit of that with the amount of debt that we're fixing to take on. Major sources of water and wastewater revenue. Metered water sales is number one, a little bit over 10 million. Wastewater fees at around 9.2 million. And then we've got the water tap fees and wastewater tap fees, which are non-operating revenues. They're, they're, uh, based on growth. You can see that the wastewater tap fees are a little bit over 2.2 million compared to the water at 670. That's an indicator that we're providing sewer for, uh, areas of town that are served by CUD with water. This percent of total revenue, uh, from these four revenue sources is 70.4% of all the revenue. This chart is water and wastewater fund expenditures by type. See where capital's a big part of the, of the budget and it's at 55%. And that's due, uh, to a large part to the plant expansion. Debt and financing strategy for the water and sewer fund. You can see there with, uh, plant expansion. And I've been told, and Brian, you may want to elaborate on the Jefferson Pike project.
Yeah. Jefferson Pike, we, we know now that it has been approved in the T-DOT budget that went to the governor. So we've been talking with T-DOT over the last couple of days. It appears that the funding source, uh, some of that will be federal money coming into T-DOT. That'll go in place October 1st. So it's in the first year of a three-year budget. So, uh, starting October 1st, the clock will begin. There are a couple of issues still relative to the Corps of Engineers with T-DOT for final planning. It looks like right now, uh, the Jefferson Pike will go out for bid, uh, August of 2020, with construction probably beginning in the fall of 2020, uh, in this budget year. So, uh, we're excited about that. We appreciate T-DOT and our legislative group working with us and the town council and the mayor. We've made several trips, several meetings. And it looks like that finally is coming to fruition, a much-needed road improvement for our community, so.
Thank you, Brian. We've got the Enan Springs Road project, uh, where we're running water lines, Olive Branch Sewer Extension, sewer inflow and infiltration, construction project. Sam Ridley widening utilities, where we have to move the lines, existing lines, and the Jefferson Pike water line extension. That's 27, almost 28 million dollars there. And we're looking at financing that through, uh, SRFL, which is state revolving fund loans first. And what money we can't get from them will go, uh, with the bond issue. Water and sewer outstanding debt forecast. You can see 16, 17, 18, a lot like the general fund. We've been working our debt down. And, uh, 19 and 20 is trending upward. We're looking at taking out a construction-type loan there so that it's a drawdown on the money that we need. So this one's going up instead of going down like the general obligation side. Same thing for the enterprise fund here. This is our debt service for the next few years, taken from the audit report. And it's very similar also. In 2025, we have a significant drop from, um, almost five million down to 1.7. We've got two years at 1.7 and then we drop off to just about nothing. Water sewer major capital projects. Jefferson Pike sewer expansion, plant expansion. And the water sewer maintenance, we got the Enan Springs Road West expense, extension, inflow and infiltration inspection, Sam Ridley, Olive Branch, and Jefferson Pike again. So we're back to the chart where we have capital projects by function in the water and sewer department. And you can see in here, the infrastructure is 96%. Equipment is 3% and other improvements is 1. Natural gas fund. 2020 is pretty much looking like a break-even year. Uh, our operating income is a, is a positive $31,323. Our interest income will, uh, move that up $175,000 to where we have $206,323. The key indicators, the change in net position is positive $218,302. The net increase in cash is a decrease of almost, uh, $4.5 million. But that's because we're paying for all of our capital projects with cash. We have no debt in the gas fund. Major sources of natural gas revenue. Residential is, well, let's go back. Let's go with the highest. The most revenue that's produced is, uh, from metered gas sales industrial, which is only Nissan, at $4.7 million. Commercial, $4.5 million, and residential, 2.9. And those sources of revenue there make up 98% of our total revenue. Natural gas expenditures by type. And you see there, capital is at 26%. Our big cost there is natural gas for resale at 51%. And that's, that's our biggest expense. We also have depreciation, which are referred to in an enterprise fund, and that's 5%. Gas fund major capital projects. Jefferson Pike gas extension, Enan Springs, West Road gas extension, the AMI meter reading system, and the gas line construction. Natural gas capital projects by function. Infrastructure at 53%. Other improvements are 41%, which is mostly the meter reading system. And equipment at 6%. This concludes my presentation on the budget. There are two other parts of the budget. The five-year capital improvements plan that shows some future projects that may be coming. The last section is the fee schedule. We encourage our citizens to look through the five-year plan and the fee schedule. And the approved budget, first read budget will be posted on the town's website in the next few days.
I just want to add to this, uh, I know, uh, being on the clock for the draft here, you know, th- this can be tedious to walk through this process, even tonight, and, and see all these numbers and, and kind of try to make a sense out of it. But I, I want to commend the department heads, each and every one of you that are sitting here tonight. Rex and his department, just a fantastic job of working through these numbers. You know, this was close to almost 60 days worth of work to pull this budget together and get it to this point. And we really focused on trying to make sure that we were meeting the needs of the community. We were trying to focus on the safety of our community. We tried to focus on not having a tax increase, which I think we were able to do. And at the end of the day, you know, what we wanted to look at was not to overspend what we estimated the revenue source to be. And when I say that, uh, one of the things that, that we really struggled with and we really looked at hard was, you know, we've been very blessed in our community to see a lot of growth. And sometimes growth is good, sometimes growth is bad. You know, when you look at, at the number of houses we've added and those type of things, there's not a large growth in, in property tax for us. Majority of our revenue is coming from sales tax. Over the last three or four years, we've seen some double-digit number of increase in sales tax. People are a little more comfortable, they're out of the recession, they're spending dollars, being around the holidays or just on a daily basis. But what we're seeing right now is a very flat. We're not seeing a decrease, but we're not seeing that substantial growth. So we tried to use that as an indicator of the way we built this budget. And I think, uh, if you look at this budget, it's pretty much a flat-line budget. It's, it's flat to last year's actual. And that, that was our goal, is to try to live within our means and do that. So I, I just want to say thank you to this, again, this group of people that are sitting here that worked so hard. Also, I want to, I want to say my appreciation. This is my first year with this budget process with the town as your town manager. And working with each of you on the council, we had individual conversations and then we had group conversations. We spent two days in a retreat, uh, going through this. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of minutia that we have to work through and understand. Uh, and I just want to say how proud I am to be part of this team and to see how this budget came together. And I think it's something that's going to serve our community very well. Thank you, guys.
And Brian, I think we all can tell you, we feel pretty much the same way after the open discussions we've had, the one-on-ones that we've had. And Rex and his team have done a great job putting the budget together for us to look at. We realized, and I know the council has realized, for the last couple of years, we've, we've really had to make some infrastructure improvements. Traffic's getting to the point that we have to do something. Many times, as H.G. pointed out a while ago, we're, we're waiting on the state and federal government to do the major roads, the highways, that we don't really have any jurisdiction over. But some of our secondary roads now are starting to see improvement. The Enan Springs extension is going to be a big one out to the schools, some of the intersections we're working on. We've got, uh, Sam Ridley Parkway getting ready to see some widening at some point in the near future. So I'm excited that we're finally able to spend some of the general fund money that we've had saved up that, you know, we, we're not here to be a bank. We're not here to save money. We're here to take this money that we've kind of held on to now and be able to do a lot of things without having to borrow a ton of money to keep our credit rating good so that when we do borrow funds, we can go borrow it cheaply. So I appreciate what you all do to be a part of that. I know there's sacrifices made in the budget this year by probably every department. You know, going, man, I'd like to have that, I need that. But, uh, we've really had to put a focus this year on our infrastructure. So I appreciate all you guys being willing to join in and make those sacrifices and do it.
We are recognizing, Mark, that the fact that we know growth really doesn't pay for itself, that the staff and, and, uh, has done a terrific job in being able to maintain the course, which we have been holding. And, uh, I just hope that we can continue to do that. You know, right in the middle of your talk there, I wanted to say, okay, sales tax are flat. Why is that? We need to shop local. I mean, just to throw that pitch in there, but that's a big part of it. I mean, online sales are getting to be a very big thing for people these days. And that cuts the town of Smyrna tax out of it, cuts the county tax out of it. We see the county raising their taxes significantly, probably. I don't know, have they come up with a number yet?
They haven't come up with a number yet. I know, uh, Murfreesboro is struggling with what their number is going to be. I think their first shot over the bow was somewhere in the 42 cent range. I think they're trying to work that down. And I, I do know that Mayor Ketchum made a comment the other night, based on their public safety request on some, uh, salary structures at the sheriff's department that would, it would, it would cause a tax increase for the county. And, you know, the schools continue to grow, part of growth. You know, the, the schools have to be built, teachers have to be hired. So, uh, we're dealing with all of that. And, uh, you know, like I said, I, I applaud that, you know, there were some tough conversations. And, and we had those individually with some, I know, Chief, I remember that conversation very well we had. But there was no bloodshed. We all came out as friends, so. Uh, we worked well together and, uh, you know, everybody understood that we needed to keep a baseline of, of a net even budget. So I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions on this item, we'll move on with the agenda. Okay? Mayor had to step out for obligation, a meeting we knew would last a little longer tonight with Rex's on-the-clock NFL presentation. So, uh, we'll move on, on the agenda to item 21. Consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 2019 to 2020, first reading. Rex, you want to talk about that again?
Yes, sir. Uh, the tax rate ordinance establishes a property tax rate for fiscal year 19 and 20. Our recommendation, our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 70.07 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property. We're asking you to approve this ordinance.
You know, one of the things I noticed in your slide a while ago was, uh, I think Murfreesboro was at like 94, 95 cents. Laverne was at 75 cents. We're at 70, so. So uh, with the quality of life here, the parks, the rec, and some of the things that we offer here, I feel like Smyrna is a pretty doggone good bargain compared to all of our neighbors. So, anything else? All right. Uh, item twenty-two, consideration of the issuance of debt for capital projects.
Okay, that's going to be a two-part process for us to work through. Uh, whenever you go and ask for debt proceeds, to issue new debt proceeds in the state of Tennessee, we have to uh pass an initial resolution. And we're asking you to consider the initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed twenty million dollars of general obligation bonds. Uh, for fiscal years twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we budgeted for some capital projects to be financed by the issuance of debt. The amount we need to borrow is estimated at twenty million dollars for road-related costs. The resolution discloses the process for protesting the bond issue. And we're asking that you approve the initial resolution that allows us to proceed with the issuance of debt.
Any questions or comments for Rex?
No, the only thing I want to make sure and highlight is that this is a, this covers the capital projects for a two-year period. Um, and that's a, I think that's, that's smart on our part, take advantage of the, the rates that we have now, the good standing that we have now, and to save those issuance costs from doing a little now and a little next year. So I, I appreciate the effort to do and kind of looking ahead and getting everything we need now so we don't have to go back to the well again.
Any others? Item twenty-three, discussion of options regarding large open spaces.
I have another.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped out of there, didn't I?
So uh, if the, if the council approves the initial resolution, then the next part would be uh consideration of the detailed resolution for the issuance of debt not to exceed twenty million dollars and contracts with a financial advisor and bond counsel. This resolution defines the issuance will be road-related projects and competitively sold on the open marketplace. The award will be on the best true interest cost to the town. The bonds will be backed by the full faith and credit of the town. Attached to the resolution are the contracts for the financial advisor and bond counsel that defines their scope of services and cost. And we're asking that you approve the detailed resolution. Uh, I wanted to get tho- those two resolutions to you earlier, but Brian and I were meeting with some uh financial group yesterday, and we had to meet with them before we uh could move forward. So I apologize for getting this out to you late, but it's uh, it's something that we need to do because the protest period will cover twenty days, and then we'll have to go through the, the bidding of the bonds.
Got it here. Any questions? Is it all Rex's?
That's it, that's enough.
You've had the floor a lot tonight, right?
I've talked way too much.
You got water over there? When you get, have the corner man come in and towel you down?
Yeah.
All right, item twenty-three, discussion of options regarding large open spaces and new developments. Uh, who's taking that, is that Kevin?
Is this something that the uh council asked us to look at and asked us to kind of redo some research on? We've had some several developments that have had some, some very large open spaces that are kind of more or less left alone and uh, to kind of set aside or to, you know, significant topo or floodplain or different things like that. And so they asked us to look at some options. I did include in my information too, just what we have on the books now, and what we require now, which are really just some amenity requirements for any time there's a residential element to a HUD or if it's a multifamily development in an R six situation. They don't really address the issue uh that you'd ask us to look at, uh, which is kind of the best way to look at these large unimproved areas. And what I've found is, is a lot of folks are struggling with the same issue uh as, same as in Smyrna. Many of these uh rapidly developing areas in the Nashville area and different places. The, the land that was nice and flat and easy to develop is, is in many ways gone. And so there, a lot of people are struggling with the same issue. Uh, I did find some options, I did put those in the information there. Uh, one would be if it's feasible to be utilized to create some sort of amenity that just kind of creates some ownership within the neighborhood, can be used by the residents, that's less intrusive, such as uh a pedestrian trail system. Uh, a lot of times those are dumb, they're not even paved or anything like that, they're just kind of a, a trail. It's more of a mulch or dirt trail. Uh, there is an actual nonprofit organization called Tennessee Trails Association that will actually have members volunteer to help build and maintain those. Uh, one idea I did find in Franklin, or actually, it's actually Williamson County. Uh, that's, they're actually doing a, a, in a partnership between Williamson County and a nonprofit in that county. They're actually building a mountain bike park. Uh, Williamson County owns the property and the nonprofits are going to raise money and build it, and then the county will then maintain it afterwards. So that's just one that's, I did find. And, and again, in an area that's pretty significant topo. Another option, we kind of mentioned this a little bit at the retreat, would be some sort of conservation easement, which works just like utility or drainage easement. The property owner maintains ownership, but another entity owns the rights to the property. It's usually like a third party such as a land trust for Tennessee. Uh, this does allow the property owner to pass property to heirs without the tax burden that is, is as significant because of the value of the property has decreased because of the conservation easement. Uh, a lot of times this is, family farms use this, uh, that allows for the farmer to continue on the, the good agricultural land and develop the area that's not as suitable for farming. Uh, a third option I did find um is our conservation subdivision standards. Uh, basically sets up a minimum set of regulations for, for development. For large areas are set aside as open space. The open spaces then again maintain either by HOA a third party as a conservation or, or the original property owner uh who will continue to use it. Uh, these regulations usually require at least fifty percent of the land be set aside, including floodplains, you know, steep slopes, different things like that. Uh, used typically as a list of allowed uses in that conservation area, and the remaining area is developed for an approved HUD. Uh, many communities actually encourage this type of development as a way to conserve these areas as wildlife habitat. Uh, this concept, as often they call it, a golf course design without the golf course. Uh, Franklin, Kingston Springs, and Cheatham County and middle Tennessee area have adopted that type of regulation. So that's a, and that's a way of, it kind of sets some parameters for something like how you set those large open, where you have a large open area, uh, and kind of sets the parameters, kind of what can, what those can be used for. There could be certain other options, this is what I found to this point. But I wanted to present that to you, and, and it's basically just there for your discussion tonight and how you want to move forward.
Kevin, you mentioned something there that I had not heard before. Was it Williamson County you said was doing a mountain bike kind of park?
Yes.
What, what if any kind of liability then falls on the county for that? I mean, if somebody's harmed or hurt, you know, whatever, so.
I mean, it would be, I'm sure there is, would be as any, with any park.
Right.
The swimming pool or anything else, you obviously assume liability, so there would be a liability, I'm sure.
Was there any waivers or something on that? Yeah. I think the, probably the reason this has come up is, you, you mentioned other municipalities are, are dealing with it. I know uh HG wanted to kind of dig into this a little bit deeper and see what remedies we could do or have at our disposal to keep that property, I guess, from ever developing again in the future way down the road. It's, it's considered really now almost undevelopable because of the topo or because of the floodplain or whatever it is. But I guess, you know, fifty, a hundred years from now, you know, HG said, what if? I mean, just what if that were to change? And uh, if there's a way, I think, that we can hold that property in that PRD to where it does, it can't change hands, that may be some sort of a remedy that stops that future growth potential. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and I think the, the conservation easement is probably the best way to handle that. Because the conservation easement, basically, what happens is a third party associated as a land trust or something like that owns, I mean, it's, if they don't own the property per se, but they own, and ma- many times they do own the property. I mean, that could be an option too, not just an easement. But for someone else, there is a third party that owns either the property or the development rights to that property. And it's, it's, it's their imperative.
And so does the uh Tennessee Trails, we, we've talked about them a few times, I know that was brought up in one of our planning meetings. Uh, do they do that sort of as a nonprofit? I mean, do they come in and blaze the trail and it's, it's kind of a rough trail? Do they then maintain it, or?
Yeah. It's kind of, they're like a nonprofit and they really just don't, two volunteers, I don't know how, I've never, I'm not, I'm familiar enough with them, but I know who they are, but I don't know as far as the quality of the work and all that, I can't speak to them.
How long they'll last as a nonprofit?
Right. But they basically are volunteer-driven and they build those trails and maintain the trails. And there's different, there's a Rutherford County chapter to that. It's uh, I think they call it so, the Murfreesboro chapter, but they work in, anywhere in Rutherford County. And a lot of it is, it's a, it's in a group that they just really enjoy being outdoors and hiking. And a lot of times it's just they get together and go on group hikes or whatever. But there are, as part of their mission, they do build and maintain these trails, you know.
Option number, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go.
Option number three, when I was reading through that, I, it, it made me think of something. And I think that any of these options we need to consider, um, if, if any of these options require an HOA or some subset of the residents to maintain it, we could be creating significant financial responsibility on those folks going forward. Um, if you've got a large area that, to, to the comment, you know, it's the golf design without the golf course, if you've got a large area to mow or a large area to mulch and maintain, and HOA's got to cover that, essentially the residents are covering that. And um, that's the one thing I want to make sure we're considering, is the impact to the people living there. By, it, it sounds like a great concept, right? You've got this park-like setting in your backyard that somebody's maintaining, but if it's on you to help finance it, and over time, we know what can happen if uh things start going awry.
I guess I'm not really seeing it as a park-like setting versus just a natural type setting that, you know, with wildlife and other things, it takes care of itself. I'm in favor of option three because I think it achieves what we're setting out to do because there's a trade-off when you're looking at a parcel of land as far as what's developable, developable and what's not. And we were talking about, you know, we would be more dense in one area. Uh, in exchange for that, you're less dense and, and it's more natural in the other area. And I think the big concern is if we continue to approve subdivisions like that, what's going to be there in twenty or thirty years? Will technology get to a point where you can build inside and you can do things? And that defeats the density guidelines that we have set as a community. So for me, when I'm looking at this, this conservation subdivision standards seems to fit the bill. I think we addressed Steve's issue as far as making sure that from a maintenance and upkeep, it's very minimal and would not have an impact. Some of the other things, you know, I know you mentioned the uh mountain biking deal. I don't think the intent is to bring people into the subdivision, you know, where it's now is, it's an attraction. And I'm certainly thinking that folks in the subdivision wouldn't like the additional traffic or whatever that goes on with it. But if, if it's something that's truly a conservation-type area, I think it, it preserves that land. Uh, it helps with some of the natural, you know, water retention and detention and stormwater and things like that. It also helps, you know, we hear a lot of comments about wildlife and, and, you know, it's, you know, go out in my neighborhood and at any night and you see ten deer in my front yard. And I mean, I'm in, I'm in a neighborhood. So I kind of get that too. So to me, this option seems like something I'd like to explore.
You know, you mentioned density, and, and I think that's what my concern was with it all along, was the density of it. And um, you know, I just look at it as, as kind of a trend. And then, and then what's to keep them from later on saying, okay, here's this property right here and this property over here, which is not continuous to it, but they're going to say, okay, that is a part of this PR, uh, PRD here. And it seems far-fetched, but I mean, you know, unless you put the, the brakes on something like this, something like that might happen down the road. And um, you know, I think it's just a matter of uh, um, some manner, um, making sure that down the road, as Steve said, that it, it can't be further integrated into the PRD. I mean, you know, this council's not sitting here, so another one down the road, they don't know what our tents were. And, and, and you know, really, Tim, the technology's out there now. Look at those houses they build out in California on the side of the hills and things like that. Even in Nashville, I've seen them the same way. So I mean, it could be done. And uh, you know, we get down into, uh, they're not making any more property, that same old line that's been going around for a hundred years, you know, and it's still true today and becoming more and more pressing today, which would then give more and more value to this unused property there.
Does this seem to fit what you're looking for, option three?
I, I thought, I'm going to be honest, I thought HG.
No, I'd rather the, 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 uh, the property just wasn't included in the PRD and you call the density what it is from where the houses are. I mean, just to be honest.
That's what I was thinking, that's what I thought the intention was, is that these large pieces of property that can't be developed today shouldn't be included in the density calculations. Um, so we're looking at conserving the land and protecting it from being built on later. But at the same time, what's, I think that's the concern, is it makes it look like it's a less dense neighborhood than it really is. And to, to HG's point, I could see a developer trying to argue that road on the, land on the opposite side of the road is part of the same complex. You know, our road happens to divide it, but it's all one piece of property. And um, that's what, what could come along. And that's where, that's where I think we've got to be careful. And I understand, there's some open area, uh, y- you can't just say no open area counts, and I understand that, but also.
I think you run into the issue of making the cost of, of a lot cost prohibitive at that point. And if you have a hundred homes on twenty acres or a hundred homes on forty acres, you've still got a hundred homes.
Yeah, but a hundred homes on twenty acres is a whole lot more compact than a hundred homes on forty acres.
But it's still a hundred homes on the overall track.
But it's twice as much property.
No, it's, if you've got a hundred homes on twenty acres and, and either a hundred homes on forty acres, you still have a hundred homes.
Right.
Yeah.
But the density would be half.
The, that's where you and I probably differ. I don't, if I've got a larger green space.
Okay, you're saying, you're saying forty acres and twenty is not being used, but in twenty is.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I follow your, your line of thinking, and that's, that's what I don't like about this.
Yeah, I think the difference though there is, is when we, when we present it to the public and when we vote on it, we're going to present it as a, a different density rating if it's forty acres with only twenty developed versus twenty acres with twenty developed.
Well, if it weren't a PRD, you'd be looking at it within the regular, uh, zoning regulations, and it would, it would be different.
But I guess, again, I'm, I'm looking at some of the trade-offs as far as amenities, uh, as, you know, as what was listed as far as the different things from pools to basketball courts to pavilions for the neighborhood.
But our regulations call for those things to be in there anyway.
Not, not in an R three.
Oh, no, no, okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's what I'm saying, and what we're looking at is, when we're going, we're usually going, I mean, typically, it's a R one, R two, R three. Usually it's R three that we're looking at, and we're looking at going from a R three to a PRD.
Well, in addition, we have more control then over design review on that product too. So in a way, we've been able to eliminate a lot of the vinyl siding product by the PRD regulation. Uh, we talked about how we're working that into, into our ordinances now. I, I get both sides. Um, you know, I always try to look at both sides of things. And so when you have a owner of a property that cannot no longer sell their property because they can't get their property sold for what they think it's worth, and then you have a buyer that says, I can't give that for that because I can't develop that without having that whole track. I mean, that's just the marketability of this. So the uh, the. the one thing I think that we hear many times when we're talking about new developments coming in is, you know, of course, traffic. And that's always a big concern. We put traffic studies now in place. But the other part of that is, uh, green space, amenities, and I don't have any emails that you all sometimes will get, I get them about the concern for wildlife. And it's not a bad thing to have green spaces involved in that development. I think it's kind of a good thing and it, erosion, stormwater, all those things tie into all that. Uh, in addition, uh, we had this discussion in the retreat, yeah, if we're not, you know, if, if we don't maintain some sort of process in our growth, we do then also lose the impact that comes with it. And we use those impact fees in this budget big time. So, uh, we, we've got to be careful that we don't shut the, shut, you know, shut the source off too. I mean, so it's a give and take. Those impact fees are vitally important to keeping the tax rate low in the community, vitally important to keeping police and fire and our parks funded in a way that they can do some things too. So, just points of interest, I guess, in the discussion. So.
I would just encourage Kevin to keep looking.
Yeah. And there's nothing wrong with that. I agree.
To keep, to keep, um, checking with other entities because we're not the only ones that are having this problem. I know we're not.
Everybody, a lot of folks are struggling with it and a lot of folks are, you know, trying to figure out the same thing we're trying to figure out.
But to HG's point, if there's a model that shows up out there that has some value to it.
Sure.
We need, we probably need to spend some time and study it a little bit.
Sure.
Good discussion. Anybody else? All right. Onto number 24, consideration of a settlement agreement resolution of Johnson versus Townes-Symrana Officer Baggett. That's you, Counsel.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I've spoken with each of you about this settlement. This is just, uh, results of a traffic accident from 2016. Uh, what you have there before you is just for your consideration. And just needs council approval and we'll, we'll need a vote on this tonight.
You do need a vote on this tonight. Okay. All right. So we'll open up for a vote. Need a motion?
Motion that we approve.
And anybody want to second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? There you go, Counsel. You have it. That all you have? Well, we're at other. No other?
No other at this time.
All right. So, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll go to our staff reports real quick. We'll try to move through them a little quicker tonight. We spent some time beating everything up on the house. Kevin, what you have?
Yeah. Just got a couple of things. We do have planning commission next week and we do have on the agenda, the Gateway Overlay District for Eden Springs Road. So that will be on the agenda for discussion by the planning commission, plus some other items. Uh, we also, um, have scheduled a, for May 9th, uh, steering committee for the comprehensive plan, probably the last time they'll meet. Uh, we're about to finish that project up. So we did schedule that for May 9th, uh, 6 o'clock. And I'll actually be in this room because the, the large conference room will be being painted at that time. So, and then just a reminder, um, I met, I think in last week, we, for our county census committee, we are still gearing up. And I talked with John a little bit today as well. We're going to be doing some things, trying to just to help get the word out here locally as well as within, within the confines of that county wide committee as well. So, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Ken. Tom?
A little update on some of the road projects we have going on right now. Stonecrest-Sammerly, they just finished the paving out there and did some temporary striping. Next week they're going to come back and do some final striping. Most of those lanes are open. Now we're running with the additional signal heads in place on the industrial side. Uh, the last thing they'll have to do is install the mast arms. Those won't be in until later on, uh, probably August, September timeframe when those get, uh, constructed and shipped on site. Potomac Place, we're able to, uh, cut the T-Dot fence, get through there and start grading in the T-Dot right away. That's, uh, we'll be adding some turn lanes, uh, at that intersection as well. Some left turn lanes from Sammerly onto Potomac, either north or south. Ena Springs West Extension, uh, been installing the water main and extending a stormwater box culvert out there uh, for weekly swan, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, weekly lane swan drive intersection improvement projects. Milton's Electric has been on site, moved some power poles out of the way. So hopefully we'll be able to start putting some rock down and start adding the other lanes of, uh, the turn lanes at that intersection. Uh, and I think that's all I got.
Got a couple of questions. Uh, mast arms for Rock Springs and Stonecrest. I noticed they were putting poles up. Are the mast arms up now?
Mast arms, all but one. We have one that has conflict with, uh, Milton's Electric and they're working to resolve that conflict of that pole. We'll have those up and ready.
Okay. So that's still within the time period that they committed. So that's good. And then, uh, the cut at Potomac, will that intersection actually open prior to Sammerly widening or what, what's the, how's that quote kind of dovetail with the other project?
Uh, right now they're projecting Potomac Place to be completed around September. So looking maybe around that timeframe to do for the, uh, start of construction for Sammerly widening.
Cause I, I think what the plan was is that Cheney would close at approximately the same time Potomac opens.
You'll have to, yes.
So, so I didn't know if that work was going to happen prior to the Sammerly.
Yeah. It'll be prior to Sammerly and we'll actually move those, uh, signals down on temporary poles and the, the actual completion of those mast arms will be with the Sammerly widening, but we'll have them down there on a temporary basis.
They're already ordered, those I hope.
Not yet.
Not yet. Yeah. Don't even get me started there.
But when.
Apparently you can't order mast arms when you know you need them. You have to wait until the.
When the engineering and everything's done and Sammerly is approved and goes to construction, the mast arms will be ordered. They'll be here well before, uh, Sammerly completes because that's more than a one-year project. So.
The reason I'm laughing is Brian and I had a very heated conversation about.
No, no, we had, we, we had. We had a healthy conversation.
Definitely. Uh, but so I'm assuming, and again, I may be speaking the obvious, but when we move that light from Cheney, then the left turns there will all close at the same time, correct? That, cause that right now, that's a left turn intersection. And if we're moving the signal, obviously it's going to go away. Right. Or left, or left off of Cheney onto Sammerly.
Yeah. Well, Cheney will come.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. That's right.
Yes. I, I just kind of wanted to point out that that, that change is coming much faster than the rest of.
That'll happen probably by September.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Mike, what you got?
Uh, just a couple of project updates, uh, same as Tom. So, um, proud to announce Jefferson Springs Greenway is finally almost, uh, complete. So I know it's been on my reports for several years and in our budget for many, many years. So I know Rex will be glad not to see that in next year's budget. Um, so anyway, we'll figure out if we want to cut a ribbon or just have people come out or whatever, but they're working on the punch list for that. But we're excited. That's really our first, uh, trail and property along the lake. So it's exciting to see that. Um, Coast Memorial, the phase two is coming along there. They've, uh, poured the light poles and bothered the bases for those. Um, and, and there'll be, I think they got some more, uh, concrete to pour next week for the benches and the walkway will be going. So we're excited to, to start to see that come out of the ground because it was a, it was a mess up there for a while, but they've got that cleaned up much better. And if you hadn't been out Morton Lane and seen kind of the progress with Cedarstone Park, I encourage you to go. Uh, the concession's out of the ground and, and, uh, appreciate Brian's help and the mayor's help with the colors. Uh, they're, they're better than, than I at that, those type things. So, uh, but it's really going to be nice when it's done. Uh, they're moving, I appreciate the, the construction company working through the winter like they did. I think the, doing the utility work has helped them when the weather broke. Also, uh, the Tire World property, I think if you've been by there today, you saw that the contractor came back and strawed that for us. Um, they did their part. We actually brought dirt in from Cedarstone Park that we had stockpiled many years ago. Uh, so that's why it was a little bit slower. We didn't have to pay for the dirt, but we did transport it with, uh, with our trucks. So, but anyway, for now it's done and grass should be growing, uh, after a rain. Uh, Nolan Drive, we're waiting on a permit from the state, uh, to get that started. And it sounds like Jones Brothers, uh, applied for that last week. And as soon as that happens, they'll start clearing. We've seen some staking out there and that type of thing. And I guess one other major thing for us, um, is the pools, getting those all up and ready for Memorial Day weekend. So if you've seen some work, uh, behind the event center, that's what's going on. And, um, it's our time of year, so we're busy.
But you guys are pretty busy right now.
We're busy.
We're getting it up though. It all feels like good. Activity in the parks again.
Right. Well, the staff's doing a lot of projects too. So if, uh, if something's out of place for a little bit, we're, we're trying to knock some of these out now.
Yeah. It's always, uh, one of my favorite times of the year when you see the ballpark lights light up.
Yes.
Last week, most of the league started or the week before.
Yes.
And it's, it's always exciting for me to drive down Sammerly and see those lights light up. You know, ballpark's going again.
We are a park town for sure.
Yep. Yes, we are.
Oh, yeah.
Mike, I have inspected the Jefferson Springs Trail. It is beautiful.
Yes.
It is beautiful. The, um, the grass is already coming up around the, uh, where you guys have sowed and the trees are hanging over that. And, uh, it's pretty much in the shade the whole way.
Yes. It will be good for the summer for a lot of people. Of course, a lot of people are already walking. But if you're a biker and can park at the event center and go all the way to Jefferson Springs rec area or Stewart's Creek Boat Ramp, uh, that's pretty impressive. If you go out and back, it's probably 14, 15 miles, you know.
Stop at Jerry's if you need to use them.
Yes.
I was thinking with all these open spaces, we talked about a while ago, HG, all we got to do is run some rough trails and put in a portage on. Jerry will keep them up for us. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Information services time.
Oh, thank you, Mark and Counsel. Um, a couple of things of note that we've been working on lately. We've been, we've been over to SOAC trying to get, uh, a few things ready for there, getting some of the audio, um, replaced, uh, audio equipment replaced that was damaged, uh, with some flood water a while back. Um, and that will also be for internal SOAC and the, uh, pool area. We've also been working on a few things with regard to, uh, enhancing some building security. And so, uh, both at city hall and throughout, uh, a number of other facilities around town. And so those are kind of the two things that have been keeping us busy lately.
Everybody's busy, aren't they? Thank you, Robert. Rex, do you have more for us tonight?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, March local sales tax, we received a million, $7,240. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of $120,772. March state share tax, we received $447,431. That gives us a year-to-date deficit of $6,451. And our revenues are tracking to budget.
That's what we like. Mr. Strange?
Yes, sir. Um, we had our pre-bid meeting for the wastewater plant expansion today. Had a huge crowd, uh, 13 different contractors, a lot of different vendors that, uh, met in a large conference room. We were standing room only and then went out to the plant and did the walkthrough, getting everything prepared. Uh, we have extended the bid date to June the 6th because of two other very large projects that are going on at the same time everybody's bidding on. So we've extended that a little bit. Uh, by SRF guidelines, construction has to start on or before August 31st of this year.
It's good to have auctions.
Yes, sir.
Right. Uh, Chief, Arm?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, uh, last week was National Telecommunicators Week and a lot of, uh, area restaurants and businesses, uh, donated food and, and what I call swag, uh, to our dispatchers and, and really made them feel good. And I just truly appreciate that, uh, the people remembering these people because that is, in my opinion, the hardest job to fill in public safety. It takes a very special person to do that kind of job. And tonight is our last night of, uh, Citizens Police Academy and we're going to have graduation and, uh, and that's all I've got.
Thanks, sir. Chief Bill?
Mayor, Counsel, uh, we had a very, another successful Easter egg hunt finally. We post, had two postponements, but Sunday probably was the prettiest day we ever had and the largest crowd we ever had. So.
So they showed up. That's great.
I appreciate everybody here that helped and, uh, appreciate everyone that came out, sir.
I know I had.
How long did that event last? About four minutes?
Yes, sir. Which, which, which one, sir?
Hey, I've got an idea. I've got an idea about stream cleanup. If we would just take some candy eggs to these things, you know, bring the kids, they'll clean up everything.
Do you have kids?
They wipe those fields clean.
Unbelievable.
We had, uh, a family event. Sorry I had to miss it, but we were cleaning up a lot of eggs in my yard too. So thank you for, for doing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hal, do you have anything you need to add with your shoulder? Oh.
I do. I have, my presentation tonight is a short video that I'd like to share with Counsel and with the public on a new opportunity we're bringing to the golf course.
That already happened.
Hi, I'm Alex Van Allen. I'm the inventor of fling golf and the world's only fling stick. Just as snowboarding can be done right alongside skiing, fling golf can be played right alongside traditional golf. So if you're a golf course owner looking to get more people under your course, or you're an athlete looking to try something new, I'm here to ask you to give me a hand and get fling golf out of the gate. Fling golf is, uh, similar, played along the same lines as golf, but instead of striking the ball with the golf bug, you put the ball in the channel of the fling stick and you give it a fling. Take a couple of steps and give it a fling. My inspiration for fling golf is that I, I've played golf my whole life and, uh, you know, and I've enjoyed it. But at the same time, I thought there must be a simpler way, a, a more naturally athletic, athletic way to play and, uh, something that gives you an easier swing. Fling golf can be played by anybody. And the great thing about it is that you can bring your family out to play. It's easier for kids to learn than golf. And, uh, you can also go run the course if you want to get some exercise. So all you're doing is carrying a one-pound stick with you and a couple of balls.
Just seeing it once, people understand, wow, uh, this is simple. I'm going to give it a, a try and have some fun with my buddies. I've been in the golf business for 27 years and I was recently introduced to fling golf. Uh, and it, it just amazed me. I, I started to think immediately what this could do to my business and to golf course businesses all across the country.
I've been on the board of the National Golf Course Owners Association for over 20 years. Uh, in a recent meeting, I exposed my, uh, board, board members to the concept of fling golf. I was pretty surprised at how open they were and how excited they were to learn more about, um, what this can do to help a golf course, uh, be more profitable and attract new customers to their facility.
You have a lot of options with the fling stick. You can do a lob wedge on the short shot, or you can roll it up on the green if you want to. So everything really comes down to the stick and your swing. You, you're not picking different sticks. You're not having to master different sticks, but you have infinite options with how you want to approach the game with this, uh, with fling stick. Fling golf is still a challenge. It's easier to learn, easier to pick up than golf. You can get better and better as you play, but you can pick it up and start to play pretty quickly.
It's actually been around for three or four years. It's sort of gaining speed in different places. I, I fell upon it last year. Um, but it's perfect for our executive course. It's just an opportunity to get other people to come out. Kids, we're going to introduce it to our juniors in our first E program as an alternative to their typical training that they do. Uh, a couple of things on this, we applied for a growth of the game grant with the Tennessee Golf Foundation and we're, and we received the money that paid for the golf stick. So it didn't cost us anything to get the equipment. And I got verified yesterday that we are the first golf facility in the state of Tennessee that has a fling golf program. So looking forward to see.
So fewer divots, I, I can tell, right?
Yes, sir.
So there'll be fewer divots. Um, is it just for the executive course?
Uh, well, right now, and that's the first question, one of the first questions Brian asked me, I think, um, there's a learning curve.
Yeah.
Cause it's a lot like lacrosse. Um, but, uh, if, if we get some, yes, to start with, but if we got somebody that got pretty accomplished in it and they were good in it and they could keep up a 15-minute per hole pace, I'd let them play on the big course. I don't know if I'd want them playing on Saturday morning at nine o'clock, but yeah, absolutely in the afternoons and stuff.
So now you have swing golf and foot golf.
Fling, fling.
Uh, you got fling golf and foot golf.
Yeah. And people that throw their clubs before will adapt to this.
But you got, you only have one to throw in this game.
Just carry the one club.
HG would, his bag would be empty.
So when you, uh, when you sign, when you play, you guys have the sticks. So it's like a rental.
We rent them. Yeah. Where we rent them to them, just like we do the, the soccer balls for foot golf. See how popular it gets. We're going to hit it with Facebook tomorrow. Uh, the company has a marketing package where they hit it with Twitter and, and Instagram.
Me and Jeff are looking at each other thinking, what, what's your schedule like? It's looks like.
I mean, I can see all sorts of opportunities with it, you know, and, and we'll just see what happens.
I wouldn't drive anywhere near the executive course the first time.
All right. Thank you, Hal. Steve, what do you got for us?
Well, I don't have any, uh, pie charts or videos, so I'm, it's gonna be.
We've had several of those tonight. We can pass.
Hard to follow that. Well, really just briefly, uh, two things. I had a meeting today with public, uh, stormwater department. Uh, they're gonna, they've asked to have a little help with our software to help. a little help with our software to help, uh, our permitting software to help their process and, uh, gonna try to make that happen for them. And believe it or not, I had a meeting today, our first meeting with our fireworks vendors. So the fireworks, uh, season is soon to be upon us. So that's about it.
All right, thanks, Steve. Ms. Dave?
Did we get Chief Bill?
Yeah.
Oh, we did, okay, yeah.
The only thing I have is we've, uh, issued forty new business licenses and we still have a few more days to go this month.
Busy month. Ryan, I know you have a few things.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things I'd like to share with you tonight. Uh, first, I want to, uh, talk about this Saturday, uh, April the twenty-seventh at eight thirty, uh, in a partnership with the American Red Cross, our local Red Cross and our Smyrna Town, uh, Fire Department will be out putting up two hundred and twenty smoke detectors in the downtown area. We're excited about that opportunity. Um, Mother's Day brunch is soon to come up. Uh, that is, uh, May twelfth and it'll be from eleven to two P M., uh, eleven A M. to two P M. at the town center and the, uh, cost again will be twenty-one ninety-five for adults, uh, children six to twelve for twelve ninety-five and then five and under is free. Reservations can be made by calling six one five, four five nine, four 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 four. And, uh, we're very excited about that. And if you missed the Easter, uh, brunch, uh, chef says this, that was just an entree into what he's gonna do for Mother's Day, so he's.
And this fills up quickly, doesn't it?
It does. We had over four hundred, uh, reservations actually for Easter. I have received three emails from the, uh, community and several people have stopped me at the town center to just rave about what, uh, the chef did for Easter. Uh, if you missed it, the words, the, the adjectives that were used were wow, impressive, unbelievable, and a couple of the children really enjoyed the dessert room, I understand, very, very much. There was a whole room of desserts.
I, I got two emails and a phone call from family members that normally come and I didn't go and, uh, the dessert room was talked about multiple times.
Big hit. Uh, but I tell you, uh, the chef and his staff are doing just a tremendous job for us and, uh, representing the town very well and, uh, he's very creative in what he's doing and bringing a really good product, uh, to the town. So we're very, very appreciative of what the chef and his staff are doing at the town center. Uh, Memorial Day is soon upon us. Uh, we again will be planning Memorial Day on May the twenty-seventh at eleven A M. Uh, we'll be working and again in conjunction with the Smyrna VFW Post eighty-four twenty-two to honor the heroes that have given the ultimate sacrifice. That'll be right here in our parking lot at eleven A M., uh, at the little monument, uh, we have here at, in front of the building. Also, I'd like to remind you, at nine A M. that morning, Boy Scout Troop Four Twenty-Two will be at Mapleview Cemetery placing flags on the graves of, of our heroes that are now, uh, residing at Maple, uh, View Cemetery. And, uh, that's, that's kind of a neat thing. I know Chief and I have talked about it. He said it's one of his, uh, I guess, uh, best events. He loves to watch those, those young men out there paying their respect. Uh, so if you get a chance, come by and visit, uh, both of those, uh, services. Uh, I also want to brag on the fire department just a minute, the Smyrna Fire Color Guard, uh, completed, uh, competed in a national competition in Indianapolis recently. They represented the town of Smyrna very well by placing second in the nation. Uh, so congratulations to our, uh, honor guard, our color guard. Uh, they, they do a great job and I think Chief, uh, they're actually been called to, to assist this week, uh, in the passing of, uh, our good friend, uh, Dan Whittle. I, I could see his face and my mind went blank. Uh, he'll be there, uh, our honor guard, color guard will be there to pay their respects. Also, um, not leaving anybody out, Tony Harris, a detective with the city of, uh, Smyrna Police Department, just recently was recognized by the Rutherford County Department of Children's Services with a nice award for her work, uh, with the Department of Children's Services. And I tell you, I, I've had the pleasure of, uh, meeting Tony a couple of times and then she spoke the other night. Uh, I'm actually leaving here to go graduate from the Citizens Academy with my wife tonight. Um, and she, uh, just heart-wrenching to listen to some of the stories that she shared and some of the, the things that, that, uh, they deal with in that, that department with, uh, their services. So, uh, we do appreciate what she does. Uh, talked a little bit about Easter brunch already. Uh, also, I don't know if you noticed in the back, we have a special guest tonight dressed in all blue, uh, uh, from our Echo program downstairs. Uh, she, she comes out of the back cave every once in a while and, and, and gives us her presents, but, uh, Annie Lombard and, um, uh, Jeff Craig both. I, I received a letter, uh, from Jeff, from the Governor's Foundation for Health and Wellness and for the third time, uh, the town of Smyrna was recognized as one of the two thousand nineteen, uh, this was our third year for two thousand nineteen, uh, healthier Tennessee workplaces and, uh, attribute that a lot to Annie and the programs that she brings. Uh, she's doing a great job downstairs for us. And then also, I don't know if, uh, I, I know all of you get this newspaper. It's the, uh, Tennessee Town and City. Uh, I know we all get it as, as, uh, town, uh, council and, uh, manager and, and I think Jeff, you get a copy of this. Annie was actually, uh, in an article, uh, this, uh, April edition, April twenty-second edition on cities' reap benefits through employee wellness programs. Uh, and she did a great job again in representing the town. And Annie, we do appreciate all you do. I'm wearing my Fitbit. I'm on my twelfth day of ten thousand steps and counting my calories. I'm not gonna talk anymore about that. It's going well, though.
But the budget guy would say that's a hundred and twenty thousand steps.
I know how many steps it is, I promise you. We've got a little competition going right now, don't we, Annie? So, uh, but I do appreciate, again, everybody, uh, from the town, uh, with our budget this year and, and everything that we're doing, so thank you so much. That's, that's all I got.
Did you mention, uh, or should I be doing this about the, uh, VFW and Boy Scout Troop Four Twenty-Two flags at Mapleview?
I said that just now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I was thinking about Annie back there.
I didn't hear the chief.
I was looking at Annie a minute ago saying, do you have something? And she goes, no, no, no. Okay, sorry, I missed it. All right, thank you, Ryan. Anything else? That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Jeff, do you have anything?
Uh, I just did want to mention, I, I think it happened after the last council meeting, uh, we hosted the, the very first Middle Tennessee City Attorney's Roundtable here at, uh, here at the town, um, which, uh, basically, uh, once every two months, we've initiated that, uh, all the city attorneys and basically connected to Nashville, uh, will meet and just kind of speak on what's going on in our locations and kind of share, uh, uh, not only the successes, but the problems that we're having so that we can kind of stay communicating.
Today was the day we, uh, sat with Jeff and did his evaluation. It's always an uncomfortable thing when you're on the other side of that, but Jeff, I do want to once again publicly say, I know in that meeting we all shared our thoughts, but I'd like to publicly tell you how much we, we appreciate you and what you do and your staff.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Uh, before I do the council, I want to congratulate Steve's family and, uh, he will tell you more about that, but congratulations on a big day last week and I'll let you share that. Raquel, what do you have?
Um, I have the Senior Activity Center is having its open house this Wednesday, um, May the first, I think it is, from eleven to two, and there will be an outdoor expo with forty-plus vendors and everyone is invited to come out. That is from Ms. Fran. Um, and also, I think it's, you'll probably talk about the awards, so I'll leave that for you, the local awards. We've already talked about Easter. Um, so then the last thing I'd say is that this is the draft weekend, so everyone be safe while you're traveling anywhere near Nashville this weekend.
It's gonna be a busy, busy place.
Yes.
Thank you, Raquel. HG?
Uh, as Raquel alluded to, this past Tuesday night, we had the, uh, Light Up Local Awards, which are awards given to local businesses which are, um, uh, which are local businesses. There you go. But, um.
Talked about shopping local a while ago, right?
I was talking about shopping local. But this is, uh, put together between S I M A and the, uh, local, um, organization of Murfreesboro and, um, Hollins Head Aviation was good enough to, uh, host that for us and it, it was, uh, it was a fun event and I think that, uh, um, I don't know, what, what really impresses me about it is the, uh, the way in which S I M A is able to work with the Murfreesboro organization. Last year we had it in Murfreesboro, this year we had it in Smyrna and, uh, it came off without a hitch. A lot of local businesses were, uh, honored.
It's a good, it's a good event. I know the mayor had fun giving out the awards and she should probably be a radio show personality or something. She does really good at that. It's fun. Ryan, I know you were there and Raquel was there. Jerry, were you? No, I don't know, no, you had something else you had to be at. So it, it was a good event. And going back to the local shopping, right? Just, uh, we're talking about online shopping and everything, how much we need local dollars spent at the local businesses and I know those businesses truly do appreciate the patronage. They're great people. Tim, what you got?
Uh, you know, we, most of us attended the, uh, ribbon cutting for traditions, assisted living. And one of the things that we've, uh, strive for here is making us Smyrna a place where you can live, work and play. And when you're living, it, it goes past, you know, the thirties and the forties and the fifties and we start getting to our sixties and seventies and eighties.
Oh.
Yeah, and, um, the thing that, that's important to me is that, as we see Smyrna continue to grow, to know that things can all stay here. Your parents aren't going to Nashville, they're not going to Murfreesboro, you're going for state-of-the-art medical care here, you're not going to Nashville. There's so many things that are happening, there, there's so many things that just are a positive and I think that's one of them, as we continue to see skilled care and skilled assisted care facilities come to Smyrna. Second thing, um, condolences to the Whittle family and Pat. You know, I, to say Dan will be missed is an understatement. He made a big impression on my life and he was a big part of the community, so again, um, condolences to his family.
Touching on traditions, I know that, I think I heard Chad tell us that day, they already had thirty-seven people and they're, they're trying to get open. And thirty-seven residents already registered to live there. It says a lot about what we've been trying to do for our senior, senior citizens that need that care and need that place and the families that have seniors that need that care and need that place. In addition, some of those families will be able to live right there on the premises, so, uh, glad to see that coming. Thanks, Tim. Jerry?
Yeah, um, you mentioned I had something the other night. It was actually my daughter-in-law's birthday, so happy belated couple of days birthday, uh, to my daughter-in-law Shelby. Um, also, I wanted to mention, uh, the same thing as Tim did as far as condolences to the, to the Whittle family and appreciate all that he has done for our community. Uh, I know we've talked about the Easter lunch, but we did have a great time. My ki, grandkids were there and they loved the Easter bunny, so, uh, that, uh, that Easter bunny had a little bit, uh, was kind of mysterious, so, uh, but they, they really enjoyed the, the Easter bunny that day. And the egg hunt, um, that you guys did, uh, that was great too. I really enjoyed coming to that. Like I said, it didn't last long, but, uh, it was fun, so thank you and, and your group for doing that, Chief, appreciate it, so, that's it.
Thank you, Jerry. Steve?
All right, um, a couple of things, I, I think, are you gonna talk about the Jeff Coos?
It's on my list, but if you want to, here, you just go right ahead.
I just want to make sure it gets mentioned that the, uh.
Yeah, I've got enough to do, so you can take it.
With Memorial Day coming up, the following weekend is the Jeff Coos Memorial Run. Um, if you haven't, uh, registered, we encourage you to get registered. There's, uh, probably a few spots left. I know that it is, uh, it is a limited registration, so once we've, once we get full, we are full. It's not, um, it's not unlimited. So if you want to participate in this, you probably need to get signed up pretty quickly. Cap it at five hundred and we are. So we're a little further than halfway and we're capping it at five hundred, so, uh, get signed up if you can. Um, Je, um, Mark alluded to, uh, special news and I want to, special congratulations to my daughter Stephanie and her new husband, Mark Ga, uh, Caleb Gagne, Mark Gagne's son.
You need to learn his name, Steve.
Well, so I, I, that's not the first time I've done that. At the, at the wedding, I actually did it as well, so, um, uh, but, uh, the Gagnes, for those of you that know them in the community, are a great family. Um, I'm super proud of the, the adults that my daughter and Caleb have become. Um, I, I told my wife that, uh, when you have kids, you know, there's gonna be certain milestones in their lives. They're gonna, you know, go to middle school, high school, drive, uh, graduate high school, go to prom, graduate college and eventually get married and maybe have grandkids. My daughter's done everything but the grandkids, so, uh, I told her, I said, we're, we're pretty much done. Um, and now, I understand those of you that have been empty nesters for a long time that you're not really done because they keep coming back apparently, but, uh, it, it's, it's a little surreal to, to be sitting at home and truly, it's just Pam and I. Kevin left to go back to, uh, his duty station in California, uh, earlier this week, so for the first time in twenty-three or twenty-four years, um, we, we really have nothing to worry about except ourselves and it's very strange, but it's, uh, it's welcomed and, um, I, I'm proud to say the Gagnes, uh, are part of the family now. It's, um, we, we all get along really well, we enjoy spending time together and I couldn't ask for a, a better kid for her to pick, so, congratulations to them. They probably won't see this until later, they're on a cruise somewhere in the Caribbean. Um, we haven't heard from them since the, since they got to the boat on Sunday.
It's the way it's supposed to be, right?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad that they clearly are having fun or I don't know what they're doing, but, uh, they, uh, yeah, they, uh, they, they have, uh, been gone for several days now. We're watching their dog and trying to keep that thing from getting lost, but, uh, that's all.
Just have a replacement dog, just in case.
Well, I, I asked him before he left how attached he was and what would happen if it wasn't here when he got back and he, he was okay with it, but he didn't want it.
Anything else?
No, okay.
All right. I've got a list of stuff that the mayor handed me before she left, I'll go over that. Uh, before I do, I personally want to say my condolences to the Whittle family, to Dan, I think a lot, I've always thought a lot of Dan, he's, he's just one of those guys you can't help but love. And, uh, to Pat, Pat worked in the real estate business for many, many years and I have and so I've had a relationship with Pat for a lot of years. I'm probably, may or may not be out of town at the time all this takes place, but I want to let them know that I'm thinking of them and I'm praying for them and, uh, you know, condolences to the entire Whittle family. Um, I had an email this week from a young man who's a Smyrna, uh, citizen here and they are launching a college here in Smyrna that will be taking classes and courses over at Life Point Church beginning in July. It's a small outfit for now, it's called Williamson College and so I'm gonna give a website address, if anybody wants to look that up, they can. And that would be at W W W dot Williamson C C dot E D U. They'll be launching this, uh, July twenty-second and some of the programs that will be available at this college will be Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration and Ministry, Ministry Leadership and Associate's Degree in Leadership. So for more information, you can log onto that website. Uh, some of you know Kenny and Peggy Thomas, it's their son that's involved in this, Brian, and so he's reached out to me and I promised him I would let it, I would let the public know how they can find out more details about this. So, uh, also, the kayak float is coming. There it is on your screen, Sunday, April twenty-eighth, ten to noon. Uh, this will launch at Volunteer Park, boats, uh, personal flotation devices and paddles provided. Sunscreen and bug spray are recommended and bring a bottle of water and clothes that you don't mind getting wet. This is ages twelve and up only and under the age of eighteen must be accompanied by an adult. Registration's required through Community Pass and you can contact Mike Dotcraft at townofsmyrna.org if you need more information on that.
Brian, we have a tradition that the town managers.
I knew that was gonna come up.
Uh, boats are optional. You just have to be the first one in the water.
There is a baptism. There is a baptism, okay. The next announcement I have is the Rape Aggression Defense Courses, better known as RAD, R-A-D, Women's Self-Defense, and this is a women-only self-defense program designed to enhance a woman's natural desire to resist rape aggression, as well as enhance the human natural fight of flight response when dealing with aggression. The entire twelve-hour course is broken down into four separate three-hour classes. There's a four-hour class session beginning May first, second, eighth, and ninth. That's Wednesday and Thursday nights from six to nine P.M. Mother and daughter student teams are strongly encouraged to do this. Minimum age is twelve years old, without a maximum age for participation, so, never mind. Juvenile students will need a parent guardian release, there is no charge to attend these classes, and for more information about RAD Systems or Self-Defense, you may go to www.RAD-systems.com. You mentioned the brunch, Brian, so the next one I have is Smyrna Kids Safety Day. It's on your screen, Saturday, May eighteenth, from nine to one P.M. at the Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center, the SOAC. Smyrna Kids Safety Day is a day of fun and features important safety education for kids of all ages. Activities will include bike obstacle course, safe animal encounters, rock climbing, rock wall climbing, magic show demonstrations, are you doing that, Tim? You doing the magic show demonstrations?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Hunting safety, seat belt safety, fire safety, face painting, Steve's doing the face painting, and much more, I think, right, Steve? Free bicycle helmets provided to the first three hundred children in attendance. There will also be drawings for free bicycles, provided by the town of Smyrna and area community businesses. Kids are encouraged to bring their bikes and to ride the safety bike course. That sounded like a fun day. All right, and then Steve's already covered the Top Gun Run, Walk, whatever you wanna do. I think the last, last one I may have here is the Stream Cleanup. And this is the Stormwater Department conducting these three stream cleanup events during the spring. Call Greg Uppam, six-one-five-three-five-five-five-seven-zero-one for details on how you and/or your group can participate in that. The scheduled dates for stream cleanup events are going to be May eleventh, nine to noon. It's the only date I have on here, oh, wait a minute here. Okay, here we go. Okay, it's on the screen. Summer camp registration continues, contact shelley.denton@townofsmyrna.org for this. And don't forget that on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-seventh, the offices here will be closed. Last thing I just wanna say, Jefferson Pike, that came out this week, and thank everybody from the Capitol on down. I know we've made many trips up to the Capitol to meet with these people, we've got people doing that on our behalf as well, and so it's a great announcement to know that that finally, finally is gonna make budget, and maybe in a couple of years, we'll have some pavement going out there, five lanes all the way out to eight forty, so we're excited about that. Anything else, come before the council. All right, if not, we are adjourned. Thank you.